All right, if everybody's ready, I'm gonna turn it over to Joe Benadette and we'll get started.
Welcome to the Kiakata Area Chamber of Commerce School Board Candidate Forum for 2025. I'd like to begin by thanking the candidates for being here and running for such an important position. I would also like to thank the Chamber Education Committee and the Kiakata Area Chamber of Commerce for organizing the event. We're holding this forum so that candidates can introduce themselves and answer several questions related to issues related to the school district. We'll allow candidates a minute to introduce themselves, 90 seconds for each question, and a minute for closing statements, which are we doing 90 seconds or do we bump that up to?
It's a minute, it's 90.
Okay. Candidates will be required to stop speaking at the sound of a bell. And if they exceed the allotted times, we ask the audience to put their phones on silent, remain silent throughout the forum, and conduct themselves in a professional manner. And each candidate will answer every question asked, and thank you for your attention, and we'll get started. So Lacey, if you wanna start on this end, and give a minute to introduce yourselves, and if you want that moment.
Good evening, my name is Lacey Ames. I am married to my husband Nate Ames, and we've been married for 25 years. He is employed with the Kiakata Fire Department, and we have five kids. Two have that have recently graduated from the Kiakata High School and are currently continuing their education. My oldest daughter is gonna be finishing up her nursing degree with the VSN this autumn spring, and then my second daughter, Ally, will be continuing her education at SCC. I have three kids still in the school district, one sophomore and two boys that are in the fourth grade. I've licensed self-insurance and real estate, and I love what I do and I love being busy. Why I'm running for reelection on the Kiakata School Board, because I'm committed to supporting the success of students, staff, and current admin. I think we have done a lot of positive things the last four years, and want the opportunity to continue what we have started as a team.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
Uh-huh, that's okay.
Good evening, my name is LeAnn Clifford. I recently, actually not recently, I've been in Kiakata for six years since moving from Kewaca. My husband and I have been married 21 years, actually on Thursday. We have two children. Elizabeth is a junior in college. She is currently going towards her elementary education degree. She graduated in '24 from here. I also have a son, Justin, nicknamed JT. He's a junior here in high school. He's very involved. The reason I want to stay on as a school board member is we have already accomplished many, many things as a board, and I wish to continue to make this district better and do better for my community.
Hello, my name is Michael Hamilton. For those that don't know me, I was born and raised in Kiakata. I attended school in Kiakata. I'm a parent, I'm the husband of an educator, and I'm a community member concerned about the direction of our school district. My background is in retail and customer service, where I've held several leadership roles, and I believe that that experience will serve me well as a board member. The reason I'm running for school board is I think we need a board that does a better job in terms of transparency, communication, fiscal responsibility, and I believe we need to prioritize the needs of the district and champions education. And I pledge to be a strong advocate for every child in the school district. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bonnie Kiebler. And first, I'd like to thank the Kiakata Education Association and the Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring tonight's forum. I'm running for the second term on the school board. I've lived in this area for 37 years and in Kiakata since 2007. I retired in 2021 after 31 years of education, and I still feel as though I have a lot to give to education. I have a passion for education and a passion for students. As a school psychologist working, I thought I knew everything about education, but when I got on the other side of the table as a school board member, I learned that I did not. And so I can take that knowledge on to further the promise of Kiakata schools and to continue some of the momentum that we've started over the last four years.
First off, thank you KIA and the Chamber for hosting this event. Thanks Clint Rag. Reside in Kiakata, I grew up in Kiakata, worked for the Lehigh County Sheriff's Office. I've been employed there for 20 years, been a way up to a current position, which is a detective. I work investigations and charge the sex offender registry for the entire county. Been married for 20 years to my wife Nicole, she's a registered nurse. I'm an SCC and Culver grad, she's a SCC nursing school grad, Iowa State grad. As far as why, why I want to be on the school board again, I've continued for four more years then, because I think we have some unfinished business, we have projects we're still working on, and I think that it's important to keep a good, strong, healthy board together, make Kiakata School District the best school district in Southeastern Iowa, which I think is a reasonable task to do. I live here, I pay taxes here, my kids go to school here, I caught a kid at home, and I want to retire her, so I think it's important to have a strong school.
All right, we'll start, next question, we'll start with LeAnn. What prior experiences have prepared you to serve as a school board member, and what do you hope to accomplish in your term?
I've already been on the school board for two years, and there's already many things that we have accomplished on the update for Calver Stadium with the new track and field. Also, there's many things that we've done for the school system already, and we're making changes to better our district. I feel that as much as we can continue to be more cost-effective with the being on the school board, that seems to be one of the main concerns for our community, is how our school board is spending our money. So we are, you know, pledging to be more cost-effective, and I hope to be part of that to continue that.
Well, I believe by experience as a retail manager, I helped lead several large-scale retail operations. So I've had budget, I've had to be financially accountable for the money that comes in. So I feel that experience is gonna serve me well as a board member, it's given me the skills to be a board member. I've also, once I decided to run, I've been looking at the State Board Association website, everybody who wants to learn, you can learn a lot about the role of the board and all that stuff. So I feel that that's given me that opportunity to hit the ground running and be a productive board member. In my, in my term, I would like to see the preschool moved. I think that's long overdue. We had an opportunity and didn't take that opportunity to move the preschool when we had that opportunity. So I think that needs to be done. I aim to ensure that there's more clear transparency and communication. Throughout my campaign for the past four months, I've been hearing about transparency, fiscal responsibility and all that, so I'd like to see that, and I'd like to see more of an investment in our elementary schools and our pre-K program. Thank you.
As I said earlier, I've been passionate about education in my career. I've worked as an admissions counselor, I've managed group homes for childrens with disabilities, and finally, 31 years as a school psychologist, served schools in Southeast Diallo. I've worked in Kiakata schools all of those 31, all of those years, and I've been in every building in the Kiakata School District, including Wells, Carrion, Lincoln, and so I have firsthand knowledge of the challenges faced every day by educators and by parents. What I hope to accomplish is pretty straightforward. We are in an era of declining funds from the state, and we need to be fiscally responsible, look at all the resources available to make Kiakata schools the best. We've made growth in our reading and math scores, and we've looked at the curriculum, and we've made some changes there, and I want to provide that additional support to our teachers to continue on that positive path that we have started.
Well, prior experience, I have three, three kids, all three kids attend Kiakata schools. My oldest son graduated with associate superate while in high school, and went out to SCC to nursing school. So I've been in and out of every single building as well over the course of their careers here. Two of them are still in Kiakata School District. I served four years on the Board before, which I've learned a lot. Two of those three years were as president. I taught there for eight years at the Sheriff's Office, and that was two school districts, not Kiakata School District, but two other school districts. So I was in a classroom quite a bit for 10 weeks for, on and off, for eight years, and then also served in the role as a school resource officer for about four years, part-time to full-time, while also working investigations and running the registry. So I spent a lot of time in classrooms in other districts. I wanted to continue to work with the board, the healthy board, and have a healthy board and our superintendent and our staff, and continue to market our school as the best school, and see a future where the narrative and the culture changes to a positive one, and we focus on the positives here and not the negatives, because when that kid's good at is dogpile on something negative, and it just brings the whole school down. Everything we've achieved goes away really, really fast. So that makes something we definitely work on, and if you can accomplish that, I think everything else will fall into place.
My experience with work in insurance and real estate and dealing with the public, I've gained skills in communication and listening, and I also enjoy problem-solving and helping come up with solutions. As a mother of many kids with different talents and gifts, I have gained experience in how the school system works and helping my children succeed in our schools, and I understand the deep need for a strong partnership between schools and families. I want to continue our work that we have started here on the school board with GW and that move, Calvert Stadium, getting those renovations finished. The Hawthorne situation where that's going to grow, I want to see that through, and then we also have some issues coming with enrollment declining and what we're gonna have to do there and moving people around.
Question three, we'll start with Michael. What do you feel are the district's greatest assets and challenges? What should be the district's top three priorities?
Well, I think our dedicated teachers and our support staff are our greatest assets. I really believe that. As far as challenges, you know, you have open enrollment, you have the funding issue, you know, you have all those challenges, and enrollment just, is just horrible for us. So I think those are our challenges right now. As far as the top three priorities, you know, number one, it should be the preschool. That's, that's long overdue, because they're in a 101-year-old building, they shouldn't be in that building anymore. I feel it's unsafe for the kids. I think we have to do a better job of updating our facilities to compete with Old Madison and Central Lee, you know, you can see what they're doing. So I think we, we need to do that to remain competitive and keep those kids in our districts so we get that, that funding from them. And then just a continued investment in our schools and our staff, because I think if we do that, then we're able to retain them and we're able to attract new families and, and increase our funding and stuff like that, so.
All right. I feel the greatest assets are our teachers, our support staff, and our administration. We have also a group of involved parents, and I think that's a real asset for our district. We have staff who care deeply about our students. I've witnessed staff taking money out of their own pockets to help students out. I think also as an asset is, as a board, we've listened, and as a board, we are diverse, and we each touch a different group of people in town, so we hear from different groups of people about needs and listen to that. I think one of the things we've worked on too is that we've heard a lot about a concern about turnover of administrative staff, and it has been quoted to me, you know, how many principles we've gone through in how many years. And so we've worked hard to address that, and now we have a stable administrative staff that I think we can be proud of and that can help us move us on. Challenges, our lack of funding from the state, our declining enrollment in Kiakata, and as Clint talked about, a little bit negativity. My priorities are again, to make sure every student has a positive experience, to continue to work on the open enrollment issue, and to look at our facilities, because we have some hard decisions to make about our facilities with limited funds, and how are we gonna best meet the needs of all of our students?
I thought that first off, our staff, next, all staff, are obviously probably the biggest asset that we have. Everybody plays a part, we drive a bus, our street floor, your future, everything has to come together, everybody works as a team, it's a well-oiled machine. I think that our other asset is our campus and facilities. I've given people rides in my car that were, worked for state, state agents, and you go around Kiakata and you kind of read me a little bit about Kiakata Rosel and stuff, and then we got to the school, and he's like, wow, the campus is really, oh, and you track and field, that, that's cool, it all sits in there, it's really cool, I like where schools look really nice. So I think all our buildings look nice also, and we've got some upgrades coming. And I think just an asset, this is endless opportunities to get better, this endless opportunities, discussion about what we can do with what money we have, because obviously we have, money's gonna be issued not for us, but for the city, the county, and the state. Couple challenges, continued discussion concerning large special education budget, if you don't wear that, we have a large special education deficit. It's not just us, it's like three, three, two other schools that combined about $220 million, so it's unfunded mandates by the state, so we're looking at that. Continued support to our staff, we need to continue to do that, it's a top priority. And then, I'm gonna keep saying, I might use word transparency more than, yeah, I guess that, that, it's too big of a buzzword, but I think changing the culture is very important here.
I feel our greatest assets are students and staff. We have been blessed with wonderful people who love to help kids attain and receive a good education. So I want to, you know, say thank you to all our staff and our students that come to our schools. Some of the challenges I see are decreased enrollment and overburdened community with taxes. Yes, money gets in our way, we don't have endless budgets, I wish we did. My first thing that I think are, is the top priority would be getting George Washington as an early childhood center, and all of those moving parts with students and staff. I also think budgeting to complete the projects that we want to, we have some large projects coming up, like the high school road, we want to see some changes to Calvert Stadium, those improvements, making sure Hawthorne fits the needs of the students that we're employing there until that population of students balances out. We also have a decreased enrollment and less funding since the reduction of students, so we have some budgeting issues that we have to go through.
I feel that our greatest assets in this district is teachers, support staff, and our administration, and as well as our board. We strive for excellence in and out of the classrooms and offices, as they want our students to be the best and to succeed. Our teachers go above and beyond for our children every single day. We have a very supportive community. If you show up on a Friday night at the football game, you'll know what I'm talking about. We've had very little turnover in the last two years because of the staff and because we've been able to retain them due to they want to be here. They want to teach our children, they want to work for our district. Our priorities should be focused that our district should be safe and inviting, as well as many updates that we continue to look forward to and that we're planning to work on. Also, our teachers and our staff, they go above and beyond, they look at outside resources for not only mental health, but the poverty level and the homelessness, and as well as encouraging more people to increase going to activities and to have more parent involvement. Thank you.
All right, we'll start with Bonnie for the next question. Why do you think some families choose to open enroll out of the district? What do you suggest the school board or district do to reduce open enrollment in the future?
I don't think there's one reason why families are open enrolling out. There's a multitude, it's easier, there's a multitude of reasons. I also think that there's a perception out there that there are other districts that don't have some of the problems Kiakata has, so I'm gonna take my child to another district that maybe they don't have the same behavior problems or whatever. That's a false perception. When you're dealing with people, every district is gonna have the same level of concerns and problems, and I think there's a temptation to go to districts that are shiny and bright, you know, and have all the facilities. Right now, Kiakata District is paying $1 million a year to our neighboring district in open enrollment funds. I would encourage every parent to really think about what that money could do to help our district. We also have to get that messaging out. There are many positives going on in Kiakata District. We've started an active FFA program, we've continued and increased our CTE, our Career Technical and Education Programs. We've worked on our four-year-old preschool, we have a track and field, so there's a lot of positives in Kiakata that we have to get that message out and get it out to parents, that this is a good district to be educated in and they need to stay here.
Bonnie took my entire answer. So, it makes sense enough. So when I got on the school board, open enrollment was an angel, it was angel question, it's not just us, it's other districts also. We're just getting kind of a, a ride in, because we're the geographical, geographical location, we're, we're between, you know, we have a couple rivers, we have Missouri, Illinois, we can't pull from any direction but north and really not like pull from, right? So we try to get what we get, so we gotta figure that out. I think the kids leave there or parents take their kids to other schools for a lot of reasons to buy instead. Unfortunately, sometimes it's sports, sometimes they view Kiakata as a rough or gritty school, and they want their kid to be more protective, especially at the early elementary school level, and we've seen some of those kids that went there for those reasons are now coming back in high school, because it wasn't a good fit at that school district to the north. So we are seeing some people getting pulled back. Some changes that we made from day one, board, FFA ag was on the bucket list, we said, we wanted that so badly bad, and we got that, we got that accomplishment, we loaned up. So that's big, I think we need to continue looking at expanding the trades, our partnership with SCC for college classes, and then expand work-based learning, because we don't need more sociology majors, we need more plumbers, electricians, drywallers, we need people I can call, will answer the phone, thank goodness I have a rolodex of people, but a lot of people are gonna retire. So there's a lot of opportunities for kids, like my kid, who wants to go play sports in college, to go become an electrician and plumber and have a great, great life. I mean, that's kind of what I'm pushing towards.
What I think, one of the reasons that we have an open-enrolling issue is our public perception, just like Bonnie had said. We have started to work on that with our media specialists, putting out more positive posts, and in one location has helped a lot. We need to celebrate and highlight our successes here, I think sometimes they get overlooked by negativity. We need to keep our social media as positive as possible and reduce all that negativity online. I kind of, I really want to see us go back to a time where if you do have an issue, instead of just splattering it all out on, you know, Facebook world, just come to a person and have a conversation. And I feel like the team that we have on the board is very good at having conversations, and we're so very diverse, like Bonnie was saying, we're very different, we're all in different stages of life, we all come from different occupations, so we just have a very good balance there, and I think that we need to stop talking negatively on social media and step back from that and just go to a person and have a conversation.
I feel that one of the biggest reasons why is because most of the time, they want their child to have a different experience at a different school. But in most cases, most of them come back to our district, because that's their home, they feel like it's home here. One other issue as well, due to the open enrollment out, is because of the online programs. A lot of parents want to keep their kids at home to teach them at home. Another thing is our baby's pushed for Kiakata, because we want our kids in the, in the seats. They learn better from person to person instead of like looking on the screen. As Clint and everybody else has said, we push for the FFA program, which is huge. It's improved, it's improved, it's grown, and it continues to grow. Also, with the opportunities for work opportunities with the kids during, you know, taking college classes to know where they want to be and to be able to follow a career path, we're also already pushing those kids from freshman to senior year, saying, what do you want to do with your life after? Our community and our district is doing many, many things, and you constantly see and hear all the accomplishments, accomplishments that this district is doing. We try to get positive, and that's what we want to be, is positive. Thank you.
Well, the thing I hear throughout the community is that it's because Central Lee and Fort Madison have significantly, they've significantly invested in their schools. Look at what Central Lee's doing, they're taking $4 million of their saved money, and they're using it for, to expand their elementary school. So I think there's several other factors, but I think for the most part, we need to as a community come together and kind of, the board needs to take the proactive step of having a special meeting or forming a community committee to find out the reasons why kids are open enrolling out. Because I think it's, we need to take that proactive step to find those solutions because of the financial, it's just gonna, the financial health of the district is just gonna continue to wane and wane, and before you know it, our school district's gonna be gone. So I just think the board needs to take those proactive steps to listen to the community. Thank you.
All right, we'll start with Clint for the next question. How are you actively involved outside your role as a school board member in the Kiakata Community School District?
Got it down, a couple things. So I just go to meetings a month, but I do attend pretty much all the meetings I got, like a 97, 90 percent probably participation rate, I think I would have missed like four meetings in two, even four years. But I'm on, a member of the Athletic Boosters, I've been a member for five and a half years. I organized, ran the first-ever Kiakata Powerlifting Competition, I did that in our weight room to market it, and I used the money that we gained from that to buy new equipment for the, the weight room. I volunteered grill at all the home football games, varsity games, I've did that the last several years. Currently a coacher of the Junior Parents for a Safe Athletic Prom Committee with Julie Klaus. I coordinated, ran the Homecoming Smash Car, you guys saw the Smash Car, that was my idea, I ran that, we, we bet our goal of $1,000 to run the board for that. I've worked the ticket gates, I ran the scoreboard announce, ran the music for the home baseball games for two years in a row. I coordinated a workday with my sons to scrape and paint the visitor's side wall that was, really looked kind of crummy, we painted that, and then I coordinated a workday with the board due to the other side of the stadium the next year. Helped people coordinate, participated in the project Safe Neighborhood Athletic Combine, which we actually have hosted here on our field, and I've attended numerous community events, 50 days, Hollywood events, Special Use Prom, I told my wife I got invited to Special Use Prom last year in Weyon, had a blast. I can see you at the pole, and I've been a cop for 20 years, so Chris says, and I'm not worried about that. I've been tested, I've been flustered, I've been spit on, so words don't hurt.
I've been cussed at, I've been flustered, I've been spit on, so words don't hurt.
Okay, last one. How will I be actively involved? Okay, I am a mother of many, so I don't have as much time as planned to be on all kinds of boards, but I am always in school, especially elementary, because I have, you know, fourth graders, so room moms, field trips, all that fun stuff I get to be a part of. My sophomore doesn't allow me too much, I don't see him, I don't know who he is, so be fine and let me know. But the other part of the question is how would you handle criticism? I kind of try to just let that go off. I really, since getting onto the school board, have tried to limit my social media, don't want to read into things, I just let it go because, I mean, that negativity really gets ya, so I prefer, if anybody has an issue, just come to me, message me, I will be open and answer the questions that I can. So I really do feel like, that I do try to listen to the staff and direct people to the right area, because as a board member, we do have rules that we have to follow. We can't just pretend like we can fix everything, we have to direct you to the area that it needs to go to.
You guys are making that hard to follow, right? I'm a mom and, you know, I never know who's coming at my door or who's walking out the door. All the kids know that my door is an open policy. You know, Elizabeth was a cheerleader all four years, I was at every home football game, every weight football game. Justin, he's in every sport that you can imagine, so he has me running everywhere. The biggest thing I think is we just, me as a parent, I plan to strive to do better and be better in the community. If I have a parent come to me and ask me, I'll do the best that I can to find that answer. If I don't know the answer, most of the time I usually just hit up Clint and he usually says, okay, this is what we're gonna do, or we talk to Dr. Dean about it. So if you guys ever have a question, of course, but you guys have our emails, go to the website and find them, you can email us. Also, you know, I mean, I began to be very involved in my church, they have a group, small group, every Sunday that we cook meals for and the, seeing all the kids that come and that are involved, it's crazy to see just their faith and to see them grow as a person. Thank you.
Well, I plan to be active and be a visible presence in the community school district, whether it's attending sporting events, performances, whatever it may be, I'll be there. Volunteer for school programs, reading to little kids, whatever it may be. Also maybe partner with the PTO organizations, because I think parents and teachers and the school is adult hand in hand. So I plan to, you know, have just conversations with people and just listen to them if that's mostly what they want. As far as criticism, I've worked in customer service retail, you know, twenty plus years, so I've been yelled at, cussed at, whatever. People just want to be heard, you know, listen to them. I might not have the answers, but I'll find the answers for ya. But at least I'm gonna take the concerns and I can take the concerns to the board, you know, of course go through the proper channels first, but then if that process or that concern's not being met, come to me again and I'll take, and we can discuss it as a board, you know, as a whole, so, thank you.
All right, okay. As a school board member, I think I've just maybe three meetings, so I'm committed to the board and to attending the meetings. I volunteer now, in the past, I haven't been, United Way doesn't have it set up yet, but I've volunteered rev with elementary kids two to three times a week every year since I've been on the board. I love being in the schools, I'm working out with some teachers, about doing some other volunteer type activities. I love to attend their functions. We've been, I've been to the science fair, I've been to our concerts, I like hanging out in the schools during parent teacher conference days, because you really get to see a lot of people and talk to different people. So I'm visible and in the community and going to athletic events and about any event at the school. As far as handling criticism, I think you just have to listen and listen deeply. There are always will be differences of opinions and I'm a firm believer that we can express our differences respectfully and I think it's important to listen to all sides. A parent is talking to you about their child, their most precious resource, their most precious thing, and you need to listen to that and hear what they have to say. It's important for us then to be able to follow that, help that parent or that community member understand the chain of command and as a board what we can and cannot do, but I believe we need to listen to them.
All right, you guys have kind of answered the question six because it was kind of crammed into question five, so.
There was a typo.
So we'll move on with, uh, if anybody wants to add more to handling criticism or...
Well, I'm good.
We'll give each a minute to talk on criticism, since there was a typo there.
It's in the same stuff, I've been a cop for twenty years and I'm the board for four, so I'm, I'm used to criticism and ideally invite it. I wish it is constructive so we both learn from it. It's not always constructive and usually criticism ends up something on here on some wonderful community page, they just want to bash everybody and be misinformed and spread misinformation or use a Facebook burner account because they don't want to tell you who they are, but they want to tell you their opinion whether it's true or not. I think I, as far as relaying the information back and forth when receiving criticism, I get a lot from students and community members and parents, especially, a lot of the kids come to me, the younger kids, like backpack situation and the change of policy, backpacks and the phone, the phones, so I got a lot of that. Like, hey, you guys can't do this, you need to talk to everybody. You think, well, it's kind of out of our hands, we're gonna give this a go, so. My wife usually tells me to get off my phone because I feel obligated to answer calls and text messages and get back to everybody and point them in the right direction. If I can't answer it, I relate to, did you ask your building admin yet? Did you get to talk to your teacher yet? Then we make our way up the ranks to superintendent and then maybe it comes back to the board.
Any else want to expand on that? To move on. All right, we'll go back up to Lacey. What is something the current school board does well and what is something they need to improve?
What I think the current school board does well is we really do respect each other, we enjoy working with each other and it was, because when I first started on the school board and before I got elected, I went to meetings and I was a little concerned that this was going to roll. I was like, oh my gosh, I don't want conflict, I was like, because I do not like constant conflict. But I was pleasantly surprised how much I've learned from everybody that has been on the board, because when we have such a diverse and different board members like Bonnie and Lori, I have no education background. I do insurance and real estate, I have sales, you know? So what I've learned from them and their backgrounds, education, because I'll go into something thinking I'm gonna be like right here with it and then I'll listen to them like, oh my gosh, I never really thought about that. So I do think that we disagree sometimes, but we are really good about communicating why we're disagreeing and coming up with compromises and solutions. Again, we just all come from different areas and different backgrounds and different ages. It's just, it's been a very enjoyable board. Things we need to work on, getting more community members coming to the meetings and more involvement which will help the miscommunication that happens through social media and the misconceptions. Plus, we are, need more involvement with the community and staff so they will understand what the board's role is.
I feel that our school board works well together, just like Lacey said, we all come from different backgrounds, we're all different ages and we all have different opinions. One thing is, is like Lacey said, is we're all able to understand each other and work together to come to a decision that's what's best for our community and our school district. One thing that we probably could work on a little bit better is trainings, being able to go to conferences and to learn more and get just a better education as in knowing what other school districts do and things like that. Also, I feel that as a board, having a solid group working together makes it better to understand what we're doing and why we're doing what we do. Thank you.
Well, one thing I think the school board does well is push those technical programs, you know, like plumbing and automotive and stuff like that and the 4HOP program, that's awesome. I mean, we really need to do something like that. As far as, what I think the board needs to work on is communication. That's the number one thing I hear throughout my campaign and talking to people in the community is they don't think that the board does a very good job communicating to the public. That's just what I hear. I really think that they need to make more information accessible, like board meetings. I get that they do the Zoom meetings and stuff like that, so maybe we should put it out on the district Facebook page so people, you know, can see it. Most people don't know about the Zoom or don't know how to Zoom, you know, or maybe put it on the district YouTube channel, you know? It's just making it more accessible to people and people know that it's gonna happen and then maybe they would get more involved. It's just little things like that that builds the trust of the community. And that's, I think, the number one problem is that there's no trust between the community and the school board and I think that needs to change. Thank you.
Bonnie?
Okay, I would echo what some other people said. I think as a school board, we've really worked hard on our culture and our climate. We've modeled in this day and age that you can disagree without being disagreeable. We've had disagreements on the board, we've had differences of opinion, but we've been very respectful and I've learned a lot from every board member that I've worked with. So, and we've learned to support each other's decision once that decision is made. Because of that, we've been able to make some issues forward, like getting the track and addressing four days a week and hearing the community, they were upset about the taxes and we were one of the three taxing bodies that were able to lower our tax rate a little bit. The things we need to improve on, I think, is messaging all the positives that are going on in this district. We just don't get that out as much as we should. I have a couple of things that are a little bit kind of nitpicky, but it's been brought to my attention that not everybody understands what the consent agenda is on the board, those are the things that we just automatically approve, like the bills, personnel, and maybe we need to do a better job of explaining what that consent agenda is because that's one of the first things we do. And then also, I've also been told that people have a hard time hearing us at board meetings and maybe we need to be getting some microphones or something because they're, when you're talking, you're talking away from the audience behind you.
I think we're a civil board, that we don't always agree, but we get along and we have good communication, we're a healthy board. Those that have been on committees and boards before, I think you understand what I'm talking about by being on, having a healthy board you can work with. We understand our roles very well, I think we've learned very much in the last four years, what our actual role is, coming in, there's a lot thrown at you and then you hear stories about past school boards and members and just the roles a little bit maybe all over the place, so I think we've honed in, our roles actually are to push people in the correct direction before they come back to us. I think it's important to have the teachers and a lot of communication and the building admins also. We're diversified, we make ourselves available, all of us make ourselves available, I think. I think we can work on our community partners, working with our community partners a lot more, we don't really work with the Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to, I'd like to sit on the meeting and see what they're doing and bounce ideas off each other. Continue to be more innovative, thinking about how to be more forward thinking, because things aren't working now, we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna make things work and maybe it's gonna look a little bit different. And personally for me, I would like to learn more about sped and IEDs. I go to Bonnie for a lot of that stuff, there's a lot of stuff in my head, it's complicated. And also, I have a general understanding of school finance, so I like to build on that by, and usually when you go to the school board conference, you can take classes, so.
Yeah, got it.
Next, Lee Hands Up. How do you view the school board in relation to school staff and what will you do to support school staff?
Well, as I shared earlier, one of our greatest assets is our school staff. As a board member, it's my responsibility to support all the school staff and make sure that administration has the resources, both in terms of people and finances, to make sure teachers have access to what they need in the classroom and feel like that they matter. Our teachers are always coming to us asking and things and so we do the best that we can to help them.
Well, I view the school board and the school staff as partners and it's towards the shared goal of giving our students the best education possible. You know, it's the school board that sets the policies, but it's the educators and the support staff that put those policies into action. So I just think to support staff, you know, I'm gonna advocate for open communication because I've actually took the time to talk to the teachers and the staff of this district, you know, finding out what their concerns are, you know? And what I hear is they want more open communication from the board. I hear all the time, well, I don't even know who's on the school board, so I don't even know who to talk to. So it's just supporting them in that way, you know? Involve them in the decision-making process because they're the ones that's gonna be affected. So I just think we need to support our staff a little bit more because I hear over and over again is we as a staff don't feel that the school board or the school district really has our back and I think that really needs to change. Thank you.
Bonnie?
Okay, I like being in the schools. I know a lot of the staff because I have worked with them in a different role and function, so they've gotten to know me and I and them. Of course, we've had a new staff hire in the last four years as well. But when approached by staff, I answer questions, I want to be available and engage in conversations. I think a lot of times when a school board member walks into a building, people kind of go on a little bit of alert and that should be the case, because we're not there and our role and function is not to be evaluative at all. In fact, we're prohibited from that and so I think our relationship should be more of getting to know each other, being able to express their concerns and needs to me. We, when the four-day school week dinko, we listen to the staff and change some of their early out to Friday afternoon, we'll see how that's going with your professional learning communities. We've worked with staff to give them the gift of time, especially Teacher Appreciation Week, we gave them afternoon off, the last contract day. We've forgiven us snow days, just honoring how much time and effort the staff put in throughout the course of the year, so I think it's really all about respecting and appreciating the staff we have.
Bonnie took mine, yep, so, seriously? Well, as far as a relationship, I personally, at the last meeting, I spent an hour after meeting with fourteen teachers and staff outside of the central office and we had a Q and A session for an hour. So I make myself available, I think, I hate using the word transparency, but everything I told them was public, was public records, everything we discussed at meetings, they had a lot of questions left out they didn't know about that we had been discussing at meetings for the last six months. I think that obviously we continue to provide any type of support and resources that we can. I like, add transition teams when available, when we can use them for everything. So everybody sits at the table. We have a PD coordinator, a professional development coordinator. We have a family liaison counselor that helps out. We continue to offer incentives to make up the, the snow days didn't have to get made up and the early out, I believe there's summer stipends coming also for training, which is gonna be something that will be available for beginning of school year. And, and I like to talk about our goals. I can ramble on for a long time about, about stuff. So one minute, sorry to put everything in a, in a, in an answer, but I like your ideas and I'm always willing to pull a trigger and talk to the other board members and see if we can make it happen.
Next.
How I view the school board's relationship with school staff. I feel it's our job as a school board member regarding school staff is to listen, but not manage. I'm not there to manage anything. We hire a superintendent to manage the school districts. I'm just here to listen. And I don't mind listening and I do, I will help direct you to the next step. I don't want you guys to come and think that I'm gonna solve all your problems because that is not possible. But I will listen to your concerns. I feel like our job is to, on the school board, is to set a vision and goals and to evaluate the superintendent and to hire a superintendent. We monitor the district's performance through those, through data and what the reports that are collected. How we support staff is to set clear policy and direction, our goals, and to support effective leadership that has been hired. So I allow people to do their jobs. I'm not going to fix everybody's problem. But we're gonna try to collectively get that to the right person. And then we as a board kind of have to stay neutral on a lot of things so that when it comes up, we are not in the depths of it all with you.
All right, start with Michael for the next one. On three current issues, what's your suggestion regarding where the preschool should be located? What's your position on a four-day school week? And vouchers are impacting public schools. What's your position on that issue?
Well, if you would've asked me a couple of years ago, I would've said that the Kieltec Medical Equipment Building was the perfect spot for our preschool. And if I was on the board, I personally would have been the no vote on moving the central offices to that building. But now, after talking to, you know, teachers and staff at Hawthorne and George Washington, I think it would be financially more, you know, a better financial decision to move the preschool to Hawthorne since there's already bathrooms, are there equipped to go to kids. I don't think we need to be spending money on putting bathrooms in classrooms. You know, if you already have those, you know, at Hawthorne, it would just make more sense to me. As far as four-day school week, I think that deserves careful consideration. But after talking with people in the community, I don't think it's sustainable. I don't think it would be a good idea, especially, you know, we have a daycare challenge already. I don't, I just think that would let stress on us. And as far as vouchers, I'm against anything that takes away from public funding. So I'll be very supportive of any initiative that increases our public funding. Thank you.
Bonnie?
Can I have a minute on each one of those? Expecting vouchers. So for where the preschool is located, we, as a board, have met, I have here on four different separate occasions, all public meetings, really wrestling with this idea of what do we do? What would the community support? Do we do a bond? Would it pass? Are we going to further tax our community? And really, um, looking at numerous options and changing grade levels. Really, the decision came that making George Washington a pre-k preschool kindergarten center made the most sense. There's some upgrades that have been on the table for George Washington for the last couple of years that we now can do. And so as far as that goes, I think that would be a great center for our kindergarten and preschool students. Four-day school week, when I looked at that and asked the question, why? We didn't have the answer to the question, why, because recruitment retention wasn't an issue. And at the, and long-term sustainability of academic growth wasn't supported by four-day. So it's not interesting. Vouchers, I am against vouchers. I would encourage you to all go to a non-person website for Public Schools Strong. We need to keep public school dollars and public, public school money and public school dollars. Private schools don't have to play by the same game public schools have to play by. And therefore, money is being taken away from public school for private vouchers. And if anybody wants to have a further conversation with me about that, I would love to because there's some real inequities there with what's going on with our public amount of dollars going to private schools.
Yep, I totally agree with that. Yeah, we could do a whole forum just on these three topics easily. I believe for seeing if you're tired, it's, it's tired, it needs to be retired. It's, I went to school there. My brother went to school there. It served his purpose. But I, the vision is, I, I see there's George, George Washington being the early childhood development center. It'd be less movement for all, everybody else is just gonna be moving preschool there. And that, you know, so we don't have to shuttle, the, the early talk was, you know, fifth grade to middle school and then eighth grade to, none of that. Just preschool over. We talked about this a lot in twenty twenty-two. Student buildings became available. We had leftover ESF funds, if you're not familiar with that, that's building money. We either use it or we lose it. And we were able to buy real estate with it. So we purchased two buildings for four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. They currently assess at two million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So that's actually a good investment on our behalf, what, what we do with the buildings. So we'll have more discussion about that. I did feel comfortable with the general obligation bond raising taxes because assessments came out, property taxes went up. Assessments came out again, property, I own property, I pay taxes. So it affects me, it affects all of you also if you own a home. The four-day, exactly what Bonnie said. We studied it, we studied, we studied it. My biggest fear was I received nine calls or emails from parents that said, if we go to a four-day, that they may pull their kids out and, and they may go to different schools. Fourteen kids possibly were, were lost. So that, that scared me just a little bit. And real quick, um, just Bonnie, gotta go over. Real quick on, on the, on the vouchers in twenty twenty-two, I started doing a lot of research on this and wherever you looked, you couldn't find a lot of information. It's super vague what was gonna be in the bill. So I started formulating a list of questions that I wanted answered. And so I asked the board, they wanted to add them to my list. And then I forwarded those to Senator Reitman. And I have the list right here. If anybody wants a copy of the questions and answers, here we go. And you're gonna find it's hard to believe if you read the questions, you still don't have the answers to them. And we're in twenty twenty-five. So here's the problem with vouchers. It's not, it's not a fair playing field. We have to count for every penny, every penny, and they do not. It's just not fair. They've been recruiting for like athletics and academics and, and giving tuition breaks. We can't do that. You know, the, it's just not fair. And I, and we don't even know how much money is being pulled away from public education yet because they won't allow that, a full audit to happen.
So it looks like we do need much more discussion on that. Thank you.
Three hundred and forty-nine million dollars this year are going to vouchers. Three hundred and forty-nine million dollars are going this year to vouchers out of our budget. And I was running a deficit budget this year. And that's to educate forty thousand students. That's how many, no, forty-two thousand students. That's how many students have been awarded vouchers. And there's four hundred and eighty thousand public school students in Iowa. So think about what public schools could do with that money.
If there was a full audit, it's gonna be, it's gonna be stuff to look at.
Okay, I agree with everything Bonnie and Clint said. With where the preschool should be located, I did vote for preschool to move to George Washington. Exact same reasons. We played with all kinds of different scenarios of moving people and rearranging. And in a dream world, if we could have done a bond, got the money, I would have loved to see TriState Medical Group become a preschool center. I mean, that was our biggest dream that we weren't able to obtain because of our tax situation and the, and the community being overburdened right now with their taxes. So we didn't want to put any more stress on our community. My position on the four-day school week, I voted against the four-day school week, but did value the work that everybody put into it. We received a lot of information regarding that topic. We really valued listening to both sides of the topic and having open discussions about it. Cause I can see a little bit of each, but again, I didn't see it working for our community. Vouchers, oh, my goodness. Again, I could see in the beginning, both sides of the voucher situation. But when you get into the, the, all of it, it's just that we're not playing on the same playing field. And it just makes the public school job so much harder. Because they just, we have to follow all the rules, have to make sure that everything is open and public where they don't have that. So it just puts us at a super disadvantage and we're just not playing the same game. And it's just a, it's not a winning battle that we can win as a public school.
In all honesty, I wanted us to build a new preschool just because I felt that it was something that was needed. But when we looked at the numbers of our declining enrollment and the amount of cost that it was going to be to build and with raising taxes, we decided to go against that and move them to GW. We're going to improve GW and we're just gonna make it better for our children. With the four-day school week, I was totally against that in the beginning only just because I want our kids to be in school. And our kids feel that it's, sometimes their school is their safe place, that they feel safe when they come to school. So why should we take that away from them? And then not only with the vouchers, as everyone knows, I'm definitely against it as well because when our public dollars are being sent to private schools, they're not held accountable for what's being done with it. So, you know, we're losing so much money with that and I just am, am disagreeing with that. So, thank you.
Got our last question here. Start with Bonnie. With the new fifty thousand dollar mandatory starting salary, veteran teacher pay and benefits have been impacted. How would you keep teachers and balance the salary budgets?
I wanna go on record that I don't think any teacher is paid nearly enough. Especially if you go to the first week in a kindergarten classroom, you can earn your money. And so what has happened is that the state has given us some funds to raise that teacher salary to fifty thousand at the first year. Then at twelve years of experience, this year, we are mandated to pay sixty-two thousand dollars. Imagine what a culture killer and a climate killer that is. If you're a teacher working thirteen, fourteen years, not making the sixty-two thousand, but a teacher with less years of experience is, is making that. And I, I think all of our teachers deserve every penny that they're paid. So that's not what I'm saying. So it's, again, it's a barely funded mandate from the state. That sounds good to the politicians to be able to talk about. I sit on the negotiating committee as several other people. And we've worked with the teachers' union to decide how they want to use the negotiated salary increases so that they have the decision how to take that. I think this year's two and a half, two point seven percent, whatever it is, and how they want to apply that to the salary schedule. So then to help give them, the teachers, some say on how that money can be used to help support that out. We also try to do a lot of things to help teachers, for example, forgive in the snow days, recognizing the gift of time. I always have too much to say.
I could do another purpose, right?
Yeah.
So I asked Senator Reitman, I go, well, thank you for giving our teachers more money to deserve it. Are you gonna give private school teachers a raise too? He said, no. It's information out of the book this time. So I guess I know teachers get a, a raise, just public school, which is just fine with me. But interesting that that wasn't something, a discussion point up in Polk County. Some things that we've done to try to help with expenses, we're going with the solar project, we've seen that. Hoping to see some huge cost savings on energy. I didn't know how the car park was gonna look out here. I'm, I'm kinda digging it. It, it looks kinda neat. And we've got those on several other buildings. There's elementary, George Washington. The, the baseball complex has it also, and so does the, I think, I think his office has one also. There's five, five buildings. Continue to trim expenses like everyone else has to do, like the city does, like the county does. That's why we have Heidi Harner, she's really good at her job, continue to work with her and, and get some guidance from Dr. Ginger. And also we'll be closing to warrants, hopefully. It's, it's a money pit. We can't, can't save it. We can't bring it up to code. There's three classrooms in it. If we would've built a preschool, there'd be three classrooms, there'd be three empty classrooms in there for a four point four million dollar preschool. It just, it just didn't seem viable for us, I would think. I think continue to work with the unions and our school business officer and just how we're gonna guide in this couple of years is important.
Okay, again, agree with Bonnie and Clint. But I took a little different approach to this question because I am looking to the future and how we're gonna keep teachers and balance budgets. Cause we do have a declining enrollment in our district and we have to address that situation with budgets and number of staff. And it's gonna be a lot of hard decisions that are gonna be coming up. But I view that, I think that we should do it with like natural turnover, managing reductions through retirement and moving staff around. I don't want any teachers to lose their jobs because of declining enrollment. And I do want the community to know that our declining enrollment is not just a Kiowa thing. It is a county-wide thing. So it's affecting every school district in our county. Our population is just decreasing and we have less funding because we have less students. And then on top of that, we have the vouchers. So it's just made a lot of turmoil in public school. And I would like another four years to, you know, figure out and try to make sure that we keep our community going in the right direction and keeping the people we have here.
Having that salary is great for teachers in Iowa, but it's also been my experience that keeping teachers is more about whether or not they feel valued for what they do and they're, they're provided the resources to meet the needs of their students. Like we've said before, Heidi does an amazing job with all of the budgeting and, you know, bringing out, figuring out ideas to control expenses. I also was on the negotiating team, so, you know, we met with the union and, you know, figured budgets and, and things like that sort of to be cost-effective. For example, we just did a change in our major medical insurance that still provides a great benefit for our staff, but reduced the costs to our district. Our superintendent, building principals and teachers also do an amazing job for applying for and being awarded grants to help us provide opportunities without a cost to the district. We've applied for and been granted hundreds of thousands for mental health, therapy, classrooms, childcare and improvement literacy.
Well, number one, I think we need to prioritize competitive salaries within our budget limits. Even if it's small little increases, it, it still shows commitment to staff. I think we need to involve staff in the decision-making, especially when it comes to the budget and stuff like that. If we explain it to the, the teachers and the staff, maybe they'll understand it a little bit better. If we explain it to the teachers and the staff, maybe they'll understand it a little bit better. You know, transparent communication, you know. Clearly communicate the district's financial situation. Maybe that will add a little bit more transparency. And then the teachers and the staff know, hey, that's what's going on, we understand it. And that kind of alleviates, you know, some of the stress and the uncertainty. And then offer, just offer non-monetary, you know, benefits, such as, you know, performance, professional development opportunities, you know. Or just recognizing our teachers for the hard work that they do. It's just little things like that that, you know, retain staff and keep staff and stuff like that. Thank you.
We'll have a minute, you have some closing thoughts. We'll start with Lacey and work our way down.
I just ask that you vote for me, if you're in the election, so that we can continue what we have started. I think we have a good thing going. I really don't have too much else to say, but vote for me. Thank you.
I just want to voice that I would greatly appreciate your guys' votes for me to continue another two-year plan, or two-year seat. And let me continue to be an access service community in this whole district. Please feel free to come to me, email me if you have questions, concerns. I am an open book, and I will try to do the best that I can to find the answers for you and provide the answer. If I can't find it, I'll get it for you. Thank you.
Well, I know you've heard a lot of talk tonight. And I know that while discussions are important, it's actions that truly matter. That's why I've spent the past four months campaigning and talking to every single community member that I could possibly talk to. Even if you're a teacher or just a taxpayer, I wanna hear from you. And most importantly, I'm devoted to the success of every child in this district. I'm committed for the four, the next four years of my life to ensuring that every child in this district has a quality education. And if you believe it's time for a fresh approach and change, which with many of you I've talked to, they want that fresh approach, they want that change. I just ask that you please cast your vote for me. I wanna thank the Chamber and the Education Association for hosting this. I wanna thank you all for participating, those online too. Just thank you for participating tonight. I feel it's very important, and I feel like this election is very important. And I just want you to know that every vote counts. So please, just get out and vote. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce and the Kiakka Education Association for this forum tonight. I also wanna thank all the candidates for being here and wish them all the best. The last four years, I have just really enjoyed being on the school board. We've accomplished a lot, we've worked well together, and we've worked hard on those important and tough decisions. And we've always kept the students in mind and what is best for the students. It's easy to get caught up in a lot of side issues, but this board has always focused on what's best for the students in this district. Being on the school board is work, but it's also been very rewarding. It's been fun to attend all of the events, from the science fairs to opening day activities, band, chorus events, athletic events. We had our first fight production last spring, and I just rejoiced being there. It's just a pure joy to me to see how hard our students and our staff were to make Kiakka School District the best district in Lee County. I have the time, the energy, and the compassion to be on the school board for the next four years, so I'm asking for your vote tonight.
My buzzword is the transparency, my buzzword is there's gonna be some culture change. I think that that's something we can work on, how it just costs a lot of money to change the culture, it's a change of attitude. One of my favorite teachers, math teachers, was Mrs. Ziegler, if you remember her. The one thing that was great about her, because I didn't, I wasn't great at math, but she helped me be better at math, is the one thing I remember about her classroom is it was Kiakka from wall to wall, and you got extra credit if you knew the fight song. And I would have to bring something like that back, where we really, really just let the kids know that Ki pride is not just a saying, it's actually a way, a way of communicating. It's gonna be the huge culture for Kiakka, and I think that we can, we can do that all together. I brought a visual aid, because, do we see these anymore? I bought this, I bought this for my son two years ago, and he wore it with three other friends. Can we bring these back? We need more of this, we need more of this, and we need less of that. So I think if we can accomplish that, then we're gonna excel. I think our room will go up. I think we'll bring back more kids from Central Lee, and we are doing that now. And I think the sky is the limit. I think, I think we're moving in the right direction. Just gonna be a lot of our decisions to make. And I think that right now you have a board that are able to make the decisions, and we have projects in place now that we are currently working on. So I'd like to continue to work on those projects and make Kiakka the best school district and the county in southeastern Iowa. So I would, please consider me on the ballot November 4th. And everybody has some great ideas, it's nice to meet Michael for the first time. Thank you for hosting this, and thanks for everybody for coming out.